Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of December 11th, 2017. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
And Chair Newman?
The next agenda item is public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues within the commission's purview but not on this evening's agenda. I have not received any speaker cards for public comments this evening. All right, so we will then move on to item five, which is staff comments, announcements, and continuances. Good evening, Mr. Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to announce that there's a supplemental packet for item, for case number 6A, and that is all we have for now.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move to our first and only case this evening. Will the clerk please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case SUP 2015-70421. Applicant Verizon Wireless request to allow the installation of a wireless communications facility with fence-mounted antennas at a water tank site. Location 4990 Villa El Cero.
And before we go to our staff presentation this evening, I want to recognize Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The project that's the subject of this application is actually a very short distance from my house, and in abundance of caution to maintain the appearance of propriety, I'm going to recuse myself from this matter and step out.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson, for acknowledging that and for taking that action. Presenting this evening, representing staff, is Ms. Leopold, assisted by Mr. Shepherd. Good evening, Ms. Leopold.
Good evening, Chair Newman and members of the commission. For your consideration tonight, a request by Verizon Wireless to allow the installation of a wireless communications facility consisting of 12 panel antenna mounted on the existing fence, a base station cabinets, and an emergency generator. The project's located at 4990 Villa El Cero. This aerial shows the project site and the surrounding area. This is Lynn Road, which turns into Portero Road, the horse stables. And then we have Rancho Dos Vientos. And this particular street is Villa Las Briesas. This is Villa El Cero, and it's a private road. And of course, the driveway to the project site, which is owned by California American This shows a close-up view of the water tank reservoir area. And Verizon is proposing three sectors of antennas. The north sector and the two areas on the south. This is the proposed equipment enclosure. This site plan shows a little bit more information. This is the north sector again, with additional fencing around it. The equipment enclosure that's being proposed. And then the two sectors on the other side, which are, I think they call them beta and alpha, this one is gamma. And they also show five oak trees, 48-inch box trees, which are being proposed to be behind the antennas for screening purposes. The trees will help the antennas blend into the surrounding area. As I mentioned, there's three sectors, four panel antennas for each sector, and there's four radio remote units. The tip heights of the antenna is 10 feet. And these are mounted on the fencing. The background for this particular project, we have Resolution Number 97-197, which is our standards and guidelines for installation of wireless facilities in the city. And typically, it's the city's policy to install the wireless antennas on existing structures. In residential areas, those can include playfields, lights, church steeples, streetlights, and in this case, fencing. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 is essentially a federal law enacted by Congress, which establishes guidelines for wireless communication facilities. And our expert, Dr. Kramer, will provide a little bit more information regarding that. In 2014, Verizon filed applications for two wireless sites to provide signal coverage. One site is located on the southwest corner of Villa Las Briesas and Villa Del Prado to cover the north side, and the south side essentially is located on the east side of Villa Andrea, about 200 feet north of Lynn Road. In reviewing these two applications, staff directed Verizon to study alternate locations to see if a single site can provide coverage. And Verizon returned to staff and proposed the facility at the project site of 4990 Villa El Cero. Essentially, this is a 3.29 acre property owned by California American Water. As I mentioned, there are three sectors with four antennas each. The north sector was going to cover the site proposed for Villa Del Prado and Villa Las Briesas, while the south sector, again, would be Villa Andrea. There is an equipment closure with a base transceiver station and generator. This slide shows, represents Verizon's current signal coverage in the Dos Vientos area. The green, yellow, blue, gray areas of the map represent good, fair, poor, and unreliable signal strength, respectively. The southern end of the Dos Vientos community has little or no coverage. This propagation maps shows the coverage that will be provided by the project. With this site, the majority of the southern part of Dos Vientos will have good signal coverage. The site will also provide good coverage for the open space area south of Lynn Road, which is a popular hiking area. As part of the wireless application process, the applicant is required to provide an alternate analysis to show that the project site is the least intrusive means to provide signal coverage. The applicant presented eight different alternates in order to provide signal coverage comparable with the project. One site is the water tank behind the residences on Camino de la Rosa, which requires a 50-foot-high structure. Another site requires a 35-foot-high roof-mounted antenna at the horse stable facility. And the other six would require installation of panel antennas on a replacement light standard. These light standards are located adjacent to residential properties. This slide shows a typical replacement streetlight design. You have your replacement pole, which is a lot thicker than the typical light pole, the light standard itself with the arm, and then the antennas are behind a radium cover at the top. The equipment is typically in the ground area and hidden from view except for a hatch. This particular site is located at the southwest corner of Westlake and Crest Haven. The alternate sites map, this shows the location of the alternate sites considered for the project, including the two proposed sites at Villa Andrea and Villa Del Prado. This map shows the proposed coverage provided by the eight alternative sites operating together. It shows poor signal to the east and the north of the intended coverage area. These sites also have less coverage at the hillside to the south of Lynn Road. As part of the wireless application process, the applicant is required to provide an alternative analysis to show the proposed site is the least intrusive mean to provide coverage, signal coverage. In selecting the antenna sites, natural terrain, availability of structures with sufficient height, and antenna capacity and coverage are some of the important factors. The proposed site is elevated higher than the area of intended coverage, and has existing fence structure to support the antennas that can provide a wider range of coverage. With regard to environmental review, the project is exempt from CEQA as a Class 1 exemption, and it is a minor alteration to an existing facility. Staff's recommendation is that the project is exempt under CEQA, and that the commission is recommended to approve Special Use Permit 2015-70421 based on the recommended findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's report. Staff is available for any questions, as is Dr. Kramer and Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold, very much for your report. And Dr. Kramer, please forgive my oversight in not introducing you at the time I introduced the staff members. I hope you can see your way clear to still answering our questions this evening.
Always.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, are there questions of staff? Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was having to wade my way through the document on the screen here. Thank you for your patience. I do have a couple of questions. Ms. Leopold may have stated it, but could you just restate or perhaps clarify for me? What is the distance to the closest house from this installation?
That's a very good question. And let me go back to that aerial view. Yeah, I'd say it's probably a quarter of a mile. The distance from Villa El Cero to the top of the water tank is approximately 2,000 feet. So it's probably half the distance of the driveway to the tank would be the closest residence. It's probably a quarter of a mile, yeah.
And it looks like it's the houses just to the north on Cero.
That's correct.
And do you recall what the difference in elevation is between the installation in those homes?
No, I do not. But this tank is at quite a high distance as far as elevation. We can get that information for you.
Would a fair estimate be maybe 150 feet difference in elevation?
Yeah. We're of the opinion it would be greater than that.
Greater than, okay, all right. Thank you. I'm trying to get the questions for you before I get to Mr. Kramer here. There is a note in the report that oak trees were required to be installed around the water tank, but in the intervening years have declined and died and are no longer visible. Was this ever brought to the attention of California American, to your knowledge, that they should have replaced those? Or is this just determined once you're doing the research and found out that, well, look, they should have had trees there already, but they don't? Do you recall offhand?
No, I do not, but Mr. Shepherd might have some additional information.
Yes, excuse me, Commissioner Nichols. At the time of the water tank and the pump station, when it was placed in the area, there was a landscape plan associated with that for the planting of oak trees along that driveway that runs up the hill to the water tank site. At the time of the completion of the tank, the trees were planted. There was an irrigation system placed in there to allow for the trees to get established in the area. Once established, I believe the watering was most likely turned off at that point to let the trees grow naturally in there, but apparently they haven't. So there are some trees out there that are no longer alive. You see the locations, you see some of the old irrigation lines up there also. The project itself, at the time it was approved, was owned by, I believe this was part of the operating engineers portion of the specific plan area. They put in the improvements, turned the land over to Cal-Am at this point. So the land area itself is owned by Cal-Am, which of course is a utility and has different regulations as far as what we could follow on that. But the owner, actually landscaping was actually part of the original developer on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And a couple of questions for Dr. Kramer. I'm trying to recollect on your past education of us on this cell site assessment process. Is the increase in height of a cell site directly related to the amount of coverage that that cell site would provide?
Yes.
Thank you. And is the direction of the signal, I say omnidirectional, but is it equal pointing up and down and out as opposed to horizontal, such that being on a hillside, that it'll have no problem pointing down towards the homes?
This is a three-sector site, and unlike most cell sites, which do provide 360-degree coverage around it, this is not designed to do that. This is designed to serve the homes directly to the north. That's the gamma sector. Then the alpha and beta sectors, which are at the south end of the site, kind of spread the signal downwards and outwards. Because of the elevation of the proposed site, the signal is being aimed downwards so that it provides coverage along the floor of the area as opposed to, say, further south towards Malibu. So this is a shaped signal, not quite 360 degrees.
Okay, thank you. And my last question regarding signal. Because this is a rather unique installation at the ground level or fence level as opposed to on a tower as we typically see, is there any concern for emissions for inquisitive hikers that may wander over into the area?
This was a concern from day one for the project because there was originally a lack of protection of the public in the original plans. And we worked with Verizon over the last couple of years to come up with a really detailed fencing plan to do exactly what you're talking about, which is to exclude the public. Part of the good thing about this particular site is that the land falls off so quickly directly below the antennas that although there's a 40-some-odd-foot control zone, it's actually far less because of the fall-off. And all of that area that is potentially accessible by the public, that would be within the control zone, is going to be closed off by fencing.
Okay, so I guess the thing that I was concerned about is most of the signage is directed towards workers that are going to do some maintenance area either to the pole or to the cell site itself. And since most hikers are oblivious to signs, that you've recommended and Verizon has agreed to take extra precautions to ensure that the safety of the hikers is maintained?
Absolutely. I would never, I would never support a project to be brought before you if I didn't believe that it would fully comply with the FCC rules.
Super. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. We hear next from Commissioner Pletcher.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Leopold, thank you, as always, as well as, I'll eventually get to my thanks to Dr. Kramer. Let's see, just wanted to start with, and this perhaps is a question more for everyone, and it kind of plays off of what Commissioner Nichols, his previous question, if I can find it in my notes. I guess while I look for it, I'll go to Dr. Kramer. I too was kind of trying to rack the brain and figure out this whole process because we get them very rarely these days. But can you give me, we had a little bit about what the FCC is and how much we can regulate and what we can't regulate. Just make sure that I'm correct, and we can't flat-out deny, but we can regulate to what extent?
Great question. In 1996, the Federal Communications Commission was delegated by Congress as part of the Telecom Act that you heard about earlier to create a national body of standards for RF emissions. And those standards are the ones that we apply as the city to this project. If the project complies with the FCC rules, then we are not allowed to deny the project on that basis. So if it clears the FCC standards for RF emissions, that's off the table. There may be other reasons why a project might not be approved or might not be approved in the form. But once a project demonstrates compliance with the FCC rules, that's it. And the FCC rules, just to make it very clear, are not just, it's not a unified standard. They're actually standards for workers who are industry-trained. There's a much tighter standard for the general population. The standard is based on frequency because we're big bags of water, and we tend to absorb RF better at certain frequencies than others, and the FCC rules recognize that difference. And finally, the FCC also talks about time issues and how long you can be exposed for. The most important thing to mention in closing is that even if the public was exposed to 100% of the maximum signal allowed for the general population exposure, that is still only 2% of the level at which a measurable change can occur. So there's a 50-time safety margin built in.
That's great, thank you. On page six of our staff report, it had mentioned that city staff reached out to you, and it came up with condition number 11, which seems to be a, at least something that they needed to run by you. I wanted to just ask you, just so I can better understand, what was the concern that arose around what was condition number 11, which is on our staff report, page eight, called fencing inspection and maintenance?
The fencing that I described earlier is important to protect the public from wandering into the controlled zone. Because this is a remote site, it's not visited very often, we wanted to add condition number 11 to make sure, to put an affirmative obligation on the applicant, basically to make sure that that fence stays in good condition and repaired at all times.
Now, based on what condition number 11 states, is the applicant required to do anything to send to the city to show that they have made that good faith, once every three months, walk of the property, and nothing, you know, no fencing issues are apparent? Kind of a check and the balance, if you will.
Yeah, there is not an obligation to notify the city that they've made the inspection. The obligation is if they've made the inspection and made a repair, to notify the city. If it was the desire of the commission to receive a quarter, I'm sorry, a quarterly report of the inspection, that is certainly a condition that you could add because it is clearly an important issue to public safety, public protection.
Because when I, okay, because when I read that, and I'll just also throw that general comment to my fellow commissioners, the only thing I caught in that was there's no, you can walk and inspect the property every three months, and oh, we got there in four months or six or whatever, and, you know, or there's a hole, there's something we need fixed, but there's no check or balance to that process, and we could still have, you know, not fully accomplished the issue of what we're trying to do, and that's the public safety aspect of the FCC and granting this application. Turning to, thank you, Dr. Kramer. Turning to Ms. Leopold, Mr. Shepherd. The oak trees that were on the site, and I know, again, Commissioner Nichols previously addressed, they were planted, they had an irrigation plan, we had a landscaping plan, they essentially died. My only concern is, do we know the reason why that they died? Because we have other trees that are going to go in, and we have a landscaping plan, and my only concern is now, you know, a few years down the road, the trees that we're hoping that to conceal, used to conceal, are going to wind up the same fate as the previous trees that were there. So I was wondering, is there anything we can do? Do we know the reason why that they died? And is there anything additionally we can do to make sure that those trees don't end up the same as the previous ones?
We do not know the cause of decline for the trees. However, if the commission wishes, staff can add to that condition and request perhaps an update on the health of the trees after perhaps six months or a year, and ensure that they are continued to thrive.
Okay. Because my thought process was just in relation to, they're already out there inspecting fences, why not take a quick walk around the trees to make sure that we're properly watered and, you know, maintaining their coverage so that it minimizes the impact on the surrounding That is actually it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We turn now to Commissioner McMahon.
I think Commissioner Pletcher covered my questions. They were the concern about these future trees and shrubs. It looked to me when I walked around the fence, there were shrubbery around the fence that had died also. And I just wanted to see a mechanism in place if this happens, to make sure that they don't die again, that somebody's checking on them regularly and, because they're for the concealment and the and the protection, and what a waste of a tree life. So I don't know how we want to address that, but that is a concern.
Certainly, as I mentioned, we can add to that condition and request a report from the applicant either at six months or a year, and make certain that the trees have been established and they are doing well health-wise.
Is it reasonable to say six months, and then a year, and then annually, something like that? Is that reasonable?
That would be reasonable unless probably after two years, or at least a year, you'll know whether or not that tree is going to continue in good health.
Thank you.
So I think a year would be tops for the reporting time.
Okay.
Chair, if I may.
Mr. Heer.
If you look at some of the conditions that we have, there's a landscape plan and a fencing plan, et cetera. For, there are many cases that you would have where a project is built and there's a landscape plan that's attached to it. And what happens in the future at times is someone sees, a reporting party sees a decline in the area, they're concerned about blight, for example, because of the trees or lack of trees, and so they make a report to the city, and the city would review through a co-compliance type of evaluation and see what conditions were imposed. And one of those conditions is that the landscape has to be maintained. So that's usually our check and balances that we would have. I don't think there's anything extra that you would need necessarily for this, because we do have that landscape plan as a requirement. And so you look at those for, for a status in case that someone says, hey, what's going on with that property, X, Y, Z? We look to see if there were conditions that were in place that talk about landscaping, for example. As far as the trees, what we normally see when we plant new trees is that there is a burden of review in one year to see if the, if the trees are taking, and there doesn't seem to be any type of indication of that they're dying off in that one-year time period.
That sounds great. My only concern is that this is an isolated area. Not a lot of people will be going by there to call the city and say, hey, what's going on with this property? That's the only concern I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I also have some questions about the trees. Starting with the photo simulations, this is attachment four in our report. They show what appear to be mature trees. They're quite a bit taller than the 48-inch box trees that are required in the conditions. And my question on that is, how long are we talking about? What period of time has to elapse ballpark to get from a 48-inch box tree planting to the trees shown in this photo simulation?
Granted, in the photo simulation, it is what it is. It's truly a simulation. The trees will not be that tall, probably. Their canopies will be lower in height, and they'll be more geared towards a lower canopy overall. With regard to the planting of the 48-inch box, those are fairly larger trees, and so with good care, they should conceal the antennas fairly well. They'll blend in with the canopy itself. As far as the conditions, as far as the, how well the tree will do, when it will be established, probably about a year, we'll know whether the tree has been established or not, and...
Okay, I'm only asking about, I do have other questions on that point, but at this point, I'm only asking about the disconnect between the appearance of the trees in the photo sim and the requirement for 48-inch trees. And Mr. Gilli has a point.
If I could chime in, I just looked up on, on the web, I pulled up an oak site, and it, their estimated height range for a 48-inch box is between 14 and 25 feet in height. And seeing as these antenna are about 10 feet in height, the photo sim might not be that inaccurate, except that staff noted, off the record, oak trees don't have canopies that look like these. This looks like a different species was put in on the computer program. But if they're 48-inch box trees, they will have a height when planted that will be taller than the antenna.
Is that height similar to what's shown in the photo sim, or is it lower? Or, I understand it will cover the antenna, which is the intent. I'm just asking about the veracity of the photo sim, which is, if you will, part of the sales pitch for, for this application.
I think the intent is to have, as, as Mr. Gilli said, to blend the antennas with, with the trees. However, in this photo sim, it appears as though the trees are too high, and they'd probably be half, half the height. So you're looking at the trees being more in keeping a little bit higher than the tip height of the antenna. The tip height is 10, and so if 14 feet is the height of, of the tree, it would blend better at a lower height.
Right. Mr. Gilli?
Just eyeballing this, knowing that there are amounts of distance and perspective, the trees are, are intended to be planted right behind the fence, so relatively close to the antenna itself. So just eyeballing this exhibit, it looks like the tree canopies are about twice the height of the, of the antenna. The 10 is about 10, the tree canopy is probably in the 20 to 25 range. And, and that is within the range of what a 40-inch box oak might have a height of.
Okay. I guess, I guess we're all in agreement here. We're saying in different ways that the photo sim is, is not really sim in this case. If I were spending money at the movies to go see a horror movie, and the ad, the ad said, oh, there's this tree monster, and the tree monster's 20 feet tall, I would pay my money to go see that movie. But if the, if I found out during the movie, the tree was only, the monster was only 10 feet tall, I might, I might have a complaint about truth in advertising. I guess, I guess that's what I'm getting at with this point. And, and to the larger point, a little bit more seriously, I tend to be more favorably inclined toward applications that make realistic representations about what the community can expect when, when a project is finished, and when, whenever landscaping has been put in has grown to maturity. Anyway, enough on that point. Coming back to the trees on... This has been asked by other commissioners, but, but I just want to confirm that, and this is perhaps a question for Mr. Heer, I did not read any explicit condition saying that staff would review in one year. I understand this is a common practice. I did not read any explicit condition saying that the applicant will ensure the health of the trees until maturity or until perpetuity, in perpetuity, or until this fixed period of time. So two questions on that. One, is that a correct reading that there are not currently explicit terms for tree maintenance in the application? And two, are we as a commission within our bounds to impose such conditions if we desire them?
On page eight of the staff report, there's a condition that, at the bottom of the page, number 13, for concealment landscaping, and goes on to the, continues on to the next page, and it does state that any dead trees slash plants that are part of the approved landscape plan shall be replaced within 30 days of discovery of such condition or receipt of written notice from the city. So essentially, it's the intent to make certain that the material, the plant material and the trees are in good condition and are doing well health-wise.
Is that condition true if it's 30 days notice 30 years from now? Or is there, is there any upper bound on that?
These, these conditions run with the land, so they are in effect forever.
In perpetuity. Okay. That's the best term. And, and just so, just so I'm clear on the perpetuity point, because, because of what you're saying, because the, that this condition is, is essentially forever, there's not really a need to add any explicit term here because it's already something that is incumbent on the applicant for as long as, yeah.
That is correct.
All right.
If I may, Chair, I would just say that this, this is in a condition that's related to the actual antennas that are there. So I don't see this condition continuing on, as far as the applicant's obligation would be concerned, if the antennas are no longer there or aren't there at the time. So again, this is a unique, is because these trees are being put there for a very specific reason related to the antennas. It is not a typical landscaping plan of, of anywhere on the property that's going to be put, and we have the obligation or concern that we want to make sure these trees mature to a certain time period. This is very specific to the reason why we have these trees in this location.
Understood. And I appreciate your making that distinction. I wouldn't expect the applicant to maintain trees for a site that it no longer had an antenna at.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Regarding the maintenance of the trees, again, I'm not sure if this is a question for staff or for the applicant, but does sufficient, we, as you've reported, previous attempt at growing trees there was a failure. The trees died. So my question is, does sufficient irrigation or natural resources for water or for other types of nutrients for the trees, does that exist on-site?
Yes, it does. My understanding is that the applicant and Calum Water will have an agreement to maintain the trees in good health.
This is just a language question for Mr. Heer on condition 28 on page 12, regarding the easement. My reading of this condition is that it's, it's a recommendation, it's a shall and not a must, that the applicant is encouraged to confirm findings and obtain permission. But those, that language, that wording is different than a requirement to do so. And my question from the city's standpoint is whether that, that presents an issue by making this a shall and not a must.
I don't think it's an issue that this body needs to be concerned about. I think this is almost as a courtesy, professional courtesy to the applicant to say there is a known easement in that location. Therefore, the concern is if you're going to build anything, hey, you might want to make sure that you're not going to build across someone's easement, and you have a private issue with that, that property, right owner, on building something across an easement that shouldn't be there. So I think this is just more of a heads-up type of condition, and I think it's appropriate.
All right, thank you. My final question is for Dr. Kramer regarding the alternative site analysis. My layman's reading of some of the proposed antenna heights is that they seem rather extreme, 50 feet in one case and 35 feet in another, 6, 35, and in addition, six more 35 feet, streetlight replacements with 6 feet radiums. My question to you is, is whether you agree that, that these proposed alternatives are reasonable ones, or is this sort of a straw man to make the application look better?
As many RF engineers are there in the world, there's the number, you can add three more opinions. The pole-mounted proposals all seemed reasonable to me. The one that was a little bit iffy was the 50-foot one at the Equestrian Center, but even that was within the range of possibilities, again, because of the slope of the land there. So the goal that they're trying to do is to provide in-building coverage, and in that case, height actually helps them a little bit. Could it be a little bit lower? Yeah, but at the end of the day, as an RF engineer, I couldn't say that that was a fatal flaw.
All right. So you didn't, you didn't look at that 50-foot antenna proposal and say, and just reject it out of hand, say that's, that's not a reasonable suggestion?
No. I, I got what the goal was, and I understand Verizon's engineers are amongst the most conservative in the business. So I understand why they came to that conclusion. Would I have done the same height? Perhaps not, but I can't fault them for that height.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. That's all the questions I have. I think we have some more commissioner follow-ups, first with Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have just a couple of quick follow-ups, and it has to do with the landscaping. And looking at this site, you know, we're not looking at a very tall antenna array, it's basically a fence height, and I would kind of defer to something that Mr. Heer was saying, is rather than getting into the specifics of numbers of trees, height of trees, size of trees, say, hey, default to the landscape plan and say, hey, whatever's appropriate for staff, because I was even thinking maybe shrubs would be better than trees. I mean, if you're just looking at six or eight feet tall, maybe we don't even need trees. Just leave it to the landscape plan, leave it to staff to define that. And then secondly, as far as the time period, we have a three-year permit, it just would tie it to the permit. If they want to renew the permit, landscaping better be in good shape. And if they, three years are over and done with, you don't need to worry about it. Every time they get a new permit, just make sure the landscaping's up to go. And it seems like a very clean and easy way to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think I would agree. To clarify, I'm certainly not looking to specify what kind or how tall of a tree or shrub should be in place. If, if the landscape plan meets the objective of what Ms. Leopold has described of landscape sufficient to cover the antennas from the view shed, and, and the landscape is maintained in perpetuity, I'd certainly be satisfied with that. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, one more question for Dr. Kramer. On page 10, number 24, technological improvements, this is instructing Verizon to change up their equipment if there becomes improvements that are less obtrusive, less visible, and an improvement. If that occurs, if the, if the technology improves, is there an incentive for them, a fiscal incentive for them to do that? Or is the cost of them changing up just not going to be worth it?
We're primarily in the aesthetics business, and to the extent that we have a condition like this, it's typically chained, tied to some aesthetic issue. So it, while we talk about technology improvements, technological improvements, what we're talking about are improvements that would reduce the visual impact through improved technology. And if we were simply regulating on technology, that would be out of bounds for us. But the purpose of this condition has always been aesthetically related. So, once a site goes in, it tends to be upgraded fairly frequently, frequently being five to seven, eight years, something like that, as we go through major generations of, of equipment upgrades. The equipment tends to get smaller, and there's some interesting technological reasons why that's the case. But a site like this is a relatively small footprint site to begin with. I would not see, I would be surprised if it expanded because of technological changes. I think this is pretty much the site that people will see for many years to come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions of staff before? Are there any other questions of staff before we go to our applicant? All right, now hearing any, we will hear now from our applicant, Mr. Pete Schubin. Speaking for Verizon, you have 15 minutes to give your presentation. We ask that you begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and lady and gentlemen of the Commission. My name is Pete Schubin. I reside in La Harbor Heights, in office in Orange County. I'm here tonight representing Verizon Wireless for this case. Staff did a good job of discussing the project specifically. And there were some questions that I think I could add some additional background to. So I'll just move on to answering some of the questions. With regard to condition of approval number 28 and the easement coordination, Verizon has an easement with the HOA and has already done that work with them to ensure there's no conflicts or problems. So as Mr. Heer mentioned, that that was more of a suggestion for us to do that work. That work has already taken place with that easement for access being in place. And at that time, the HOA having reviewed our plans to make sure they were granting an easement for a project that they would support. There's a lot of discussion with regard to the landscaping, the height of the trees, why these trees, these specific species, will they survive? How tall are they? Mr. Gilli was correct in his assessment of the height that he found online. I remember a meeting that some people in this room attended with me in December of 2015 at, at the project location, where we looked at the antenna locations that were mocked up, previous semitals for antenna designs, and arrived at these current antenna locations attached to the fence. At that time, there was a great deal of discussion regarding with the city's landscape architect and city staff, that question of why did the trees die that were up there? There were some trees that are surviving. There are other trees that did not survive. And a lot of those were planted on the slopes that were cut as part of the grading that was done up there. So essentially, trees planted in rock that, as they would do now. This area where we are planting is soil with, behind the antennas, with the work that's been done there. It's also included in the plan and discussion with city staff and then our agreement with Cal Water, or excuse me, Cal Am Water, to have the trees properly planted, holes dug out, proper soil brought in, so the trees will survive. There is irrigation on the property. And our agreement with Cal American Water includes maintenance of those trees and then to pay for maintenance of those trees to ensure that they survive for the long term. With regard to the height, the 48-inch box was a, the size and species was a requirement of the city that we complied with. So with the, you know, why the size, how tall, that was the discussion. And it was to make sure that the antennas would have a backdrop and be in the canopy of the trees or the trees would exceed the height of the fence, exceed the height of the antennas. So they wouldn't, the antennas would not silhouette on the, on the hillside at all. I think that about covers the questions. Is, with regard to the trees, are there anything else that the commission has questions for me that I might be able to assist with tonight?
Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Schubin, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome, and we request your approval of this project. It's something we've been working on for a long time, and we'd like to serve the community with a good wireless service. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to the public comments portion of the hearing. The, any, any, any citizen is welcome to make a comment at this time. We ask that you fill out one of these beige-colored speaker cards. Believe we've got, let's see, one. Yeah, we've got five speakers this evening. So you are each allotted five minutes. As with Mr. Schubin, I'll ask when you, when you begin your presentation to state your name and city of residence for the record. And I'll, I'll call out each speaker, and then the next two speakers who are coming up, so you can get ready. When you're speaking, there'll be, during your five-minute period, there'll be a yellow light that lights when you have one minute left and then a, a red light when your, your five minutes are up. So we'll begin with Sherman Barr, followed by Heidi Struthoff and Robert Reynolds. Sherman Barr. Again, if you could begin by stating your name and city of residence. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sherman Barr. I live in Newberry Park. More specifically, I live on Via Geraldo, which is basically this, one of the closest areas to that, that tower. And I just want to let you guys know that I specifically moved to this neighborhood because of the natural beauty of the area. It, you know, we have, obviously have that, that beautiful hill right next to us. You know, we also have the beautiful views of, of Boney, and, and it is, it is a very, very beautiful area. That, that hill is the, one of the tallest points of our neighborhood. And I would say that it's, it's seen by everyone there in that neighborhood because of its vantage point. And, and so anything that is done with that area will be seen by the entire neighborhood. And so, you know, a couple of things that I would say about that would be, you know, where's the, the nearest oak tree to that area? I don't even think that the tomog, that the tomography of that area really has oak trees. I think that, you know, there's a lot of brush and, and that sort of thing. So I think that oak trees would probably stick out like a sore thumb in that area. That, you know, I, I would say that there would probably be a better, a better plan as far as camouflaging that site. The other thing is that, my question is, is that do we really need a cell tower there? And the reason why I say that is I have a lot of friends and family at my home, and they have Verizon. And nobody has complained to me that they have, you know, weak cell signal or were not able to take any phone calls or, you know, what have you, because there was never any, any reception issues, you know, with their phone. So do we even need, like I said, do we even need a cell tower there? The other thing is if, if, is there, other than the alternatives that were shown, are there anything, any other alternatives that would be further away from homes or, or out of a line of sight to homes that, that have even been brought up or, you know, looked at? That would be another thing that I would look at prior to approving, you know, this application. That hiking trail near that tower, there is a driveway or a, a road or, or what have you that goes up to that, that, that tower. And it's very accessible to anyone that is hiking, kids, what have you. And that is, that is a concern as far as safety. Obviously, this equipment emits pretty harsh RF. And so that would be a very big concern, you know, to the community as far as people hiking in that area. And, you know, like I said, I, I think personally speaking, due to the fact that, like, like I've got so much friends and family that do have Verizon that have never had an ounce of problem, I, I can't see the reason of, of even adding that cell tower to that part of the, of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Next up is Ms. Heidi Struthoff, then Robert Reynolds and Thomas Lee. And again, please begin by stating your name and city of residence for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Struthoff. I'm a resident of Newberry Park and, or specifically in Dos Vientos. I live on a street that is, I guess, has, will have a beautiful view of this cellphone tower. I think a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, there was an application by Verizon to put up a tower. And so I had the opportunity to talk with all of my neighbors, walk the neighborhood. And we had a petition at that time. And the majority of our neighborhood does not want a cellphone tower there for various reasons. We worry about our, the value of our homes because one of the selling features of our homes is beautiful views. And when you take that away with cellphone towers, however they might be disguised, that is concerning to all of us. And so my question for you all is, is it necessary, you know, similar to the speaker before me? The majority of the neighborhood that I live in, we don't want this cellphone tower there. So where is the need? If we don't need it, why is it being built? You know, nobody's asking for it. Maybe that's good for Verizon, but it's not good for the people that live in the neighborhood. You know, when I look out my window, I see that hill, and it's beautiful, it's natural. That's why we bought our home in that area. There's a beautiful mountain to our left, there's mountains to our right, and none of them have utility towers on the top of them. It's one of the last remaining places, you know, if you go to the valley, to LA, there's things everywhere. And it's not natural, it's not beautiful. This is one of the last remaining places that holds that beauty. And I think that's really precious. And because Verizon wants to have a better signal in a very small pocket, I don't think that's a really strong reason to destroy that natural beauty. Our area, not only does it serve our neighborhood, which of course we love the natural beauty, that's why we moved to these homes, but there's many hikers, myself and my family, we hike up to that water tower all the time. And so it's not a remote area, it's very close to our house, it's a five-minute hike from our home. And so we consider it part of our backyard, so to speak. And so I think that it's a real disservice to our whole community to have something like this built there. It's not necessary, and it's not going to look beautiful. It's not what the area is about. So that's, I guess, my, that's all I have to say about that. And I hope that you guys take that into consideration, that as a community, this is not wanted. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Struthoff. Next we hear from Mr. Robert Reynolds, Thomas Lee, and Alicia Reynolds. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, my name is Robert Reynolds. I live in Newberry Park, Dos Vientos. And I'm also an RF engineer, so I understand what we're talking about here radiation-wise. I don't believe that's an issue. As a matter of fact, the heights of this tower is probably the safest thing to do for the community. This is a view that I get from, from the street, from my, my house. You know, I can see this whole town very clearly. So it's very prominent. Right now, there's a, you can see a portion of the fence where the water tank is. I was instrumental when they first put the tank in to get the fence lowered another four to six feet. And which they did, the water company totally cooperated. But we kind of expected the chaperone to grow up around that and cover it, and it hasn't. You know, so, by the way, in terms of things growing, I've got a slope in my backyard. Many of the trees and plants that we put there, even though they get watered, fed, they don't grow. There are some, the natural chaperone tends to grow like wildfire. So I'm just making that comment. There are some trees that do well, but I, I kind of, I'm, I'm of the opinion that a tree up there, probably not required, again, the height. If you get some other plants that grew up to the level of the antennas, it'd probably be adequate. And maybe just taper it, make it look nice, you know, green shrubs. So one thing I did is I, I did a little petition here. I petitioned 62 of our neighbors. And we petitioned to deny the aesthetic proposal. I did take a look at the plans some time ago, and, and there were some things that I didn't like. Black paint is one of them. And I'm not sure exactly what your current implementation is. Our notice said 630, and you got here at 615. I didn't get to see it, but anyway. We did, we have 62 petitioners that denied it. There's not a single petitioner that, that, that didn't sign to deny it. By the way, that's 100%. But we're denying it on the fact that we, that, of the, of the current aesthetic appeal that I saw in the plans. I looked at the plans a couple of times. And so what we're, what we're doing is we're requesting that we have input on the final configuration. We're not opposed to the, to the antennas. I think it's good for the neighborhood if, if we do increase signal strength and get the added capability. And that's what the petition says. So to that effect, we had seven out of 62 that absolutely denied the towers, didn't want them at all. So that, that was, it's a pretty good indication that people are in favor of it, that they want it to look nice. Okay? So I think that what, what we, what we are requesting in our petition, that basically we work together with Verizon, the city, California Water, and the homeowners to, to, to provide something that's, that's appealing to everyone, you know, works for everybody. And that might entail hiring a landscape artist and doing a little extra, maybe even covering the fence the way, water tower fence the way it is. Because it crowns the hill, it doesn't look natural, it has never really looked natural, but it doesn't look that bad. I mean, it doesn't look like, this is, this is what you do if you do nothing. You get the, I, this is another place in Thousand Oaks area, Seamy Valley area. Excuse me. So, and I noticed, I, I noticed it was black on the fence, and is, are the antennas going to be painted, painted black also?
Mr. Reynolds, please, please address the commission only.
Oh, okay.
The staff will have a chance to, to respond afterward.
Well, does anybody in the commission know what color they're going to paint them?
I don't personally, but, but we can, we can direct that question to staff, and they'll, they'll be answering.
All right.
They'll be responding to, to your comments and all other comments.
I'd be interested in, and others would be interested, is something more camouflage than black. Okay, that's what I saw in the plans. So anyway, the petition was not broadly advertised, I just wanted to get a sample, a small sample, what people think. Some of it was done online, some of it was door-to-door. And like I said, no one, no one refused to sign it door-to-door. And, and we did get some that fully rejected it, a few. So I have the results of that if anybody's interested. So I might have a few additional comments here.
Mr. Reynolds, if, if your five-minute allotment is, is up, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Yeah, I'm pretty much done. I just wanted to take a look and see if there's anything else. Yeah, I think in terms of changes to the site, we would like notification. Anything changes, you want to add something up there? But the main thing is we want neighborhood notification and approval of what you're doing. That's, okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Who would like copies of this?
Uh, just one moment, please. I believe Commissioner Nichols has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your presentation. I do have a couple of points I'd like to clarify. You indicated in this petition that a number of the neighbors signed that, if I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I heard you say was that the, the majority was not opposed to the antennas. They were just wanting to add input on the design. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Out of 62, we had seven that didn't want the installation at all.
Okay.
The others denied it just on the aesthetic appeal, but said that we are willing to work with the city and the group to. work with the city and the group to, to make, to make it agreeable to everyone.
Okay. And I also heard you mention, as far as the aesthetics, color of paint, black versus camouflage, or the type of landscaping. You even indicated in the prior opportunity, you provided information on the height of the fence so that it could be lowered. So obviously you, you have some experience in this site, but your expectation was that the chaperone would cover it, which it has in its, at its mature height at this point. So when it comes to providing input, you just want to weigh in on the color and the landscaping? Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
That's primarily it. Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with the radiation aspects. And, and I'm quite knowledgeable, by the way, the materials that you can use to shield RF, I worked in the space industry for 31 years. And I'm, I'm a materials expert in terms of RF radiation.
Okay. All right, thank you. As Mr. Newman mentioned, we're taking notes, staff is taking notes, we'll be sure. And I know our applicant is probably taking notes as well, and we'll address that when we're through.
Yeah. And I think just low-level foliage, like you were talking about, I don't think we need to create big trees, you know. I think if we just made it consistent and the same color and things blend, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and thank you, commissioners. Our winner next from Thomas Lee, and then Alicia Reynolds. Mr. Lee, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Lee, and I resident in Newberry Park in Dos Vientos, specifically in the treasures tract, which is right below where the water tower is. I live close enough to receive the letter regarding today's meeting. Real quickly, before I forget, in regards to Mr. Reynolds' petition, I saw it as well, and I'm glad he got it out there. And with the people that signed it and whatnot, it's a part of an app, which you may be aware of, called Nextdoor. And it does encompass a larger area than, than what we're, you know, where we live. So not knowing who signed it or whatnot, we don't know the scope of the distance of where these people are living. So I take that, you know, into consideration when you do look at that petition. So, you know, my family and I, we chose this house, this location, because of its kind of isolated area. Treasures, you know, it's, you drive up a couple of streets and it's surrounded by mountains. And, you know, that's where we can afford, that's where we grew up, in Porter Ranch, back when, before all the growth. And it reminded us of that. And that's why we chose this area. You know, we hike, we, I bike ride, I mountain bike, I frequently go by that path that goes by that water tower up there. We do hike up that driveway that, that does go up to that water tower, and we've hiked around that water tower also. So it is, it is, I think, traveled frequent enough. We do see people walking and running up that hill for exercise. So it's pretty accessible. And as a previous speaker had mentioned, you know, we don't have a problem with cell service myself. I do not have Verizon, but we do have friends and family, just like the previous speaker, mentioned that, you know, I don't, I don't get complaints about cell service in that area. And, you know, having said that, you know, where my carrier has their cell towers, why can't Verizon place their cell towers where theirs are at also? If Verizon is having trouble with cell service in that area. As much as you cover these antennas too, I know you've probably seen as you drive across the state, the city, and so on, they're pretty easy to spot. You know, when you look, you can see that they're being masked, they're being, they're being hidden some way, whether it's artificial, artificial trees or real trees. If you put the shrubbery or trees up by that water tower, you have, when it's, it's natural kind of environment where we don't have a lot of water right now, it's pretty brown. All of a sudden, you'll have this, whatever it is around this water tower that we can see. And it just, it just is not natural. I mean, having a fence up there is one thing, it is translucent, you know, it doesn't take up, it's not a lot of mass. A water tower, to protect that water tower, to have that water tower there is, of course, it's, it's for our survival, having water. But having a cell tower there is not survival, it's not needed. Again, I just, I just don't see the need to have it up there. If we're having, I, I, everyone I have had at our house, again, they just do not have a problem. I wasn't going to talk or mention this, but having talked, having heard about the RF values and frequencies, you know, I don't know much about it. Mr. Reynolds might know more or whatnot, too. But my concern is maybe this, I don't know what studies there are or whatnot, but my concern is my children. They're growing people, they may respond to this RF signal or radiation, whatever it is, different. It's our home. We spend hours and hours and hours there. When you sleep, that's when your body rejuvenates. Do these, do these RF signals harm our children? That I don't know either. But I think it's something that we do need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Our next speaker is, and final speaker, public speaker, is Alicia Reynolds. Good evening, Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Reynolds, and I'm speaking thereafter my husband. We live in, excuse me, we live in Dos Vientos. And we do have the view of the tower. Now, what I'm requesting is that I believe that we can cover it up with some kind of foliage, shrubbery, so that we don't see that. And it doesn't interfere with the natural beauty of what we see. And I believe that we can still receive the services from the tower. I'm not professional on any of this stuff, but I believe that it is possible to slowly grow the shrubbery and therefore handle the beauty that we all enjoy. That's all I have to say, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all our public speakers for coming to the meeting tonight and making your views known. Very much appreciated. We move next to, back to staff to hear comments, responses to what was said by the applicant and by public speakers. Ms. Leopold.
Thank you, Chair and the men. With regard to some of the comments, the concern is to, as far as the camouflage of the site. And essentially, the application is looking to paint the fencing and the antennas a flat black color.
I'm sorry if I can interrupt you for just one second. I neglected to mention, and staff may want to comment on this or not, that in addition to the speakers tonight, our packets included a number of written comments about the proposal. By my count, there were five letters in support of the application and six letters in opposition. Some of the six were, I believe, were Mr. Reynolds' petition. I'm not sure why those six out of 60-something were chosen, but, but all of them had additional comments beyond the language in the petition. So perhaps, perhaps those are, that is why those letters were included. Anyway, I would be remiss if I didn't mention those other public comments. And again, sorry for the interruption.
It's okay. Thank you. Again, with regard to the camouflage of the site and the fencing, the staff has reviewed the fact that the applicant is wishing to paint the fencing and the antennas a flat black color. This certainly will provide shadow and will blend in with, with, with the area. However, Dr. Kramer does have a specific condition that he can address this concern. With regard to the driveway and the fact that this area surrounding the California American property is owned by COSCA, the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency, the antennas will be fenced to ensure that there is safety in a safe distance from the antennas and to prevent any vandalism. With regard to the number of the, the alternatives, essentially Verizon has looked at all these alternatives, and staff does agree that they've done an adequate job in trying to understand any other possible site that would be, that would be necessary if this site was not approved. So essentially, staff is in agreement with the number of alternative locations and their evaluation. With regard to the shrubbery, there's other types of shrubs also that would be available as far as native. There's toions, and certainly our landscape architects will review the landscape plan, and will decide what shrubs and, and what other plant material would be native to that area and also drought tolerant. So with this, I'll have Dr. Kramer make his comments at this time.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, a number of the speakers tonight have talked about whether there's a need for the site. Verizon has asserted the need is based on low signal levels, not the absence of signal. How this affects wireless quality is more readily apparent in data transmission, where you have, if you have low signals, those signals will, are more easily corrupted, and you have more retrys, it slows down the throughput. Another feature of the type of network that Verizon and the other wireless carriers are building is that the levels are optimal when they're balanced. So if you have a weak area and a strong area, then people who are living in the weak area will tend to try and get signals from a strong area. And it, it doesn't allow for the proper balancing of signal versus capacity and demand. So Verizon's project here is to effectively balance its provision of service in the areas that have already been shown in the coverage maps. The, there have been some questions on RF emissions. And as I said before, that really, it's not a satisfying answer to the public, but because the project will comply with the FCC rules, this cannot be a consideration in your decision. That's just the law, and I'm sorry that that's just kind of where we're at with the law. There was a comment about the fact that different carriers provide coverage from different locations. The way that I kind of describe this is, every wireless company wants to cover the same area, but they have a jigsaw puzzle. And each jigsaw puzzle of coverage, Verizon's jigsaw puzzle is different, the shapes of the pieces are different compared to T-Mobile, compared to Sprint, compared to AT&amp;T. So as the networks mature, and this is a very mature network in Thousand Oaks, there isn't the same ability to say, okay, well, we'll go over here and try and provide coverage here. I didn't have a problem with the proposed location, given what, given what the coverage goals are. And I don't think that there's a more concealed solution available that would cover as much coverage, as much area from a single location that is vertically separated and relatively camouflaged, not perfectly camouflaged. There's, that's not what this site is. Mr. Reynolds talked about camouflage issues, as did Mrs. Reynolds. And we have some ideas about some additional wording to talk about. Instead of painting it flat black, painting it a combination of browns and greens and camouflage pattern. I don't know if it's going to make a significant difference, but if it helps to allay some concerns, I think that, that some of this is easily done through a modification of a condition. I think that's really, that's, that's what I have at this point. And Mr. Shepherd has additional comments.
Just a, excuse me, a little bit, bit of information as far as the lay of land, per se. Just for the record, the fencing material, as far as the protective fencing for the RF, as Ms. Leopold pointed out, the property is actually surrounded by COSCA land. We just wanted to point out that that fencing material is on CalM property, it is not on COSCA land, in keeping with the direction of COSCA preserving, or providing natural areas without improvements on that. So all the fencing is on CalM property, does not go on the COSCA property. Also wanted to at least provide a little bit of a, excuse me, a possible revised condition if the direction of the commission is to look at a different landscape component versus oak trees, as Commissioner Nichols had pointed out, as far as the heights of the tree and so forth there. I would refer to condition number 13, on page eight of the staff report. I think that's it. Condition 13, first, first sentence would read as written, as far as ending, that first sentence ending the natural setting on the ridge line. Next sentence would be modified to read initially the same. The applicant shall submit a landscape plan, and then adding the language, "for review and approval of the, by the Community Development Department prior to issuance of the building permit." That would be the end of that sentence. The rest of that sentence would be struck. And then the next sentence that begins, "these trees that would be replaced with landscaping," and then reads as, the same, "shall be strategically positioned," and the condition would continue on at that point. This would provide, as far as a landscape review, as part of the city, from the staff, the CDD staff would be looking at that in conjunction with our landscape consultant, and would not necessarily require oak trees in that site. When staff first was up on the site a couple of years ago, as Mr. Schubin pointed out, we were looking at the materials, went back at the original landscape plan for the, the site, the oak trees. There was locations of trees to be planted. Not all the trees have died out there. There, others have taken in root, but are, are not necessarily full, robust trees because, again, the terrain of that area. So we were looking at a continuation possibility, the oaks that were planted up there as part of the, the scheme. But certainly, the commission, looking at this, if lower material, different type of material, but provides for that backdrop can be maintained by landscaping, then we would suggest that rewording of condition 13.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Christian Pletcher.
I was racing to push my button to tell you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just to reiterate, and just for my understanding, to clarify, we had a lot of usage of the word antenna, and a lot of different words thrown around, which suggests different heights and suggests possible, an imagining of the site that's maybe a lot different than what actually is intended. Can staff just reiterate, what is the maximum height that these, you know, the applicant is proposing for these, these antennas?
The antennas themselves are eight feet high. Now, the tip height, the very top of the antenna, when mounted to the fence post, is approximately 10 feet high, the maximum.
So we're talking 10 feet from the ground?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I just, I noticed, I went back listening to the, the public comments, and I certainly thank all the neighbors for coming out tonight, that there is a pre-existing antenna there that is quite significantly larger. I, so I just wanted to reiterate that point. Could I just ask, now that we're kind of, Mr. Shepherd threw out the, the suggestion to number 13, just again to reiterate, we ended up on the eight box trees just based on kind of previous history with the site? I just want to make sure I know how we got there before we consider changes.
If I could comment on, on that, the, the desire of the, of the, the box sizes was to get immediate screening, or immediate or immediate backdrop. Shrubs could be an alternative, but it won't be immediate. There will be a period where there, that you will see the silhouette of the antennas. Forty-eight inch box trees, as the applicant stated, they weren't volunteered because they're not affordable. Those are going to be trees that on day one would be sized so that the residents would not see an artificial edge of it. Now granted, maybe oak trees aren't the tree to do, or maybe there is a desire to have it be shrubs that slowly grow up, but the staff's intent was to try to put something living that would be, provide a better backdrop than the fence and the antennas.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure I understand where we are before we consider going perhaps a different direction. How did we, I guess this is maybe part applicant question, part staff question, just how do we end up on the color black or matte black for consideration of the antennas? Is this a color that we've done before on previous Verizon sites or previous antenna sites?
In this particular case, we're looking for the antennas to blend with the fencing. And so if the fencing is going to be painted a flat black, then the antennas would blend in the best as a flat black color. We could look at, as Dr. Kramer had mentioned, a combination of green and black that would blend best with plant green colors and black shadows.
I'm tending to, you know, like that idea a little bit. It reminds me of what was written at page four of the staff report. This is regarding the related equipment. I'll just read it for the record so everybody knows. Since the CalM site is surrounded by public open space, the enclosure will be painted a color that will make it blend with the natural surroundings. I tend to, you know, personally like that a little bit more. It allows at least some openness between the applicant and city staff to come up with something that is going to address some of the comments we've heard tonight from the And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions, but since we ended on paint over there, I'll pick up on paint and I would like to hear from the applicant. I know you probably have dealt with this issue at least once or twice before. But when it comes to choice of paint, do you choose to match the natural surroundings or in this case where looking from below and up towards the sky, do you choose a sky blue so it blends with the sky? So maybe you could just address those types of questions. I don't know, Ms. Leopold, if you have an answer for that, that'd be great.
Also, Dr. Kramer mentioned he wants to comment. I've looked at antennas that are painted sky blue, they don't look good. You want whatever the background color, in this case, it's going to be closer to the ground, so you want to try and blend it with colors that are already there existing with the browns and the darker green colors, plant green colors and the black. So in this case, it would be better with more of a camouflage blend.
Very good. Mr. Kramer?
The poster child for how to do this wrong is in the Sepulveda Pass where there's a pole that's half camouflage and half blue and neither looks appropriate, so we would encourage you not to go in that direction.
That's why we have experts to do this and not the planning commission. Thank you. I did want to follow up. First of all, I just wanted to compliment our speakers. You know, I've been listening to cell site audiences for four plus years now and this is probably the most informed and intelligent group of questions or comments that I've heard and I certainly appreciate that. And I noticed there was a common theme here regarding the desire not to have trees, not to have oak trees, because it kind of puts a little thumbprint saying, hey, look what's up here. And I would have to say, I've hiked this area a number of times throughout the entire circumference of Dos Angeles, including to the top of Canal Mountain. There's not a whole lot of oak trees out there, not a whole lot. Now, I've come across a lot of chameys, a lot of sage and pockets of poison oak. Now, we could put poison oak around the fence and that would probably keep some of the hikers away. But I'm thinking of the natural type of look, if you, you know, put our typical oak trees, pepper trees or eucalyptus trees in a place where they don't belong, it's going to look awkward. And so that's why I was kind of commenting on Mr. Reynolds saying, hey, I thought the chaparral was going to grow up, was probably at its mature height and is probably not going to get any taller, but if we could find something that blends and is not, you know, holly green or something like that, actually complements the native chaparral. That's why I kind of defer to the landscape architects, the people that know this and know what would fit. You know, I don't want to dictate from the diocese or what, how many or where or what should be, but you know, I think hearing from their comments, just say, we don't necessarily want trees, we just want something that blends, that kind of makes it disappear as good as possibly can. I think that's a great idea, so we could target that. I think it'd be very, very helpful. One last thing I wanted to just get on the record. I think we've addressed Ms. Leopold or Dr. Kramer, most of the comments that I've taken notes here, but the one thing that I think Mr. Reynolds was asking in addition was to seeking notification. Now, I know we've notified of this public hearing, but you know, Ms. Leopold or others, is there any, will there be any other activities beyond this or is this hearing the conclusion of it and when, once we're through here, that there'd be no further input for the public?
Certainly, the difficulty with this site, there's no grading permit required. And so typically, when there is a grading paving drainage plan, there's typically a pre-construction meeting. In this case, there will not be. So this is pretty much the final review of the project.
Okay, okay. So this is, so here, we thank you all for your comments. We'll wrap this up here at some point, but appreciate your comments on that. And I actually did one more thing. I heard two opposing comments. Mr. Berry said that this will emit harsh RF radio frequency and then Mr. Reynolds said RF is not an issue. So, Dr. Kramer, could you please just kind of wrap this up with and put a bow on it as to the concerns about radio frequency and is it or is it not a legitimate concern?
People have legitimate concerns, but this is an area of federal preemption. So the best I can say is that not only will this site fully comply with the FCC rules, but it is far less than the 2% level, it's far less than that 2% level of the level that would actually be, cause a measurable change. So while nobody can guarantee the safety of anything, whether they're crossing the street or building a two-story building, based on the science, and the FCC just went through a process to look at the, at the structure of its rules and based on all of the public input, found no basis to change its RF rules for cell sites. This is about as close to safe, if you will, as we can give public assurance. Again, the site complies with the FCC rules, so while the city consistently over the past 20 years has looked very closely at this question, and there have been some sites that have not come forward because they wouldn't comply with the FCC rules, this site will and therefore you cannot base your decision on public concerns of RF. I'm sorry, that's just the law.
Thank you for that clarification. And I think with one quick review that that was all my questions, comments. Mr. Chair, yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, just a quick question. If this is approved, what would the start date be and how long would it take for it to be completed?
That's truly a question for the applicant, Mr. Schubin. He could probably address that.
Thank you.
And my only question for staff is regarding the landscape plan. I understand that tonight, as you said, really is it, but there will be a landscape plan issued at some point in the future. My question is, will the public have an opportunity to review that plan? Will it be available for public review?
Typically, typically not. It's truly something that the landscape architect would review, staff would review it, and essentially the landscape architect of the applicant would also have input.
Is there a process by which a citizen could petition the city or in some means obtain a copy of that or see a copy of that final landscape plan?
Certainly. My suggestion would be that perhaps the applicant can review the plan with the homeowners association and prior to final review of the plan.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions of staff before we move on?
Excuse me, Chair, if I may?
Mr. Heer.
Thank you. If you are done with your questions to staff and you're going to bring the applicant back up, I think we would need for questions.
That's our next step.
All right. At this point, I would suggest we get clarity with condition number 13. After hearing Mr. Shepherd's comment of the change and then hearing the various statements from this body, I believe Mr. Nichols made a comment about he wasn't, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he wasn't necessarily thought that the condition should say actual oak trees. I don't want to, again, put words in his mouth, but it seemed like he was saying that he would rather have it follow the guidelines of what Mr. Shepherd did in his change to 13. The reason why I'm saying that today, right now, at this point is, is that if you have a change to the condition, we need to make sure that the applicant is aware of that change and is acceptable of that change.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Heer. And at this point, we will bring the applicant back up. You have five minutes for rebuttal of the comments. And if you could, sir, address the, your willingness as applicant or your openness to the suggested change in language that Mr. Shepherd stated. I'm paraphrasing here, but my understanding of the change is that it takes out explicit references to oak trees and substitutes a more generic form of landscaping.
And Mr. Chair? Also, if the applicant could just address the matte black color in which the antenna and the fence, and if maybe we can seek a change as to the, you know, more of a natural, you know, playing into the natural color, the natural scheme of the land up there?
If I may, Chair, to Mr. Pletcher's comment, if you go to condition number 12, it does specifically state that it's to be painted with a natural matte finish with a color to blend with the surrounding natural features. I think that condition covers that issue.
Right, right. So I think the only, the only specific change we're talking about at this point is on condition 13, which would take out an explicit requirement for you to put oak trees in and instead use the more general term landscaping. So with all that said, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pete Schubin, Sequoia Deployment Services here tonight for Verizon Wireless. I could address all those issues and I'll do it in the time allotted. I'll start with color because that is absolutely the easiest one to take care of. The flat black color was presented to us as a Koska standard for fencing in open space areas. That's where the color came from. Since once we were attaching to a fence and on non-Koska property but adjacent to, that we would use that color. Any color is appropriate that the city would look to us. The city is well aware of the rules of painting of antennas, which is no shiny metallic in coloring that goes on the antenna, and I don't think that would be anything we'd want to see here. With the rule of thumb for what to use, it was discussed by staff of, you know, not using sky blue. When that was mentioned, I returned in my head back to the 1980s and County of LA jurisdiction standards, which was a federal sky blue color, and it took a lot of years for those poles to go away and get painted to other colors to make them look better. From a rule, if you have a color, match it and then take a color ticket that you get at Home Depot. And if you're in one of the lighter shades up top, go to one of the darker shades at the bottom of that card and use that color. Make the antenna look like a shadow. So any color that staff comes up with it, be a brown or a green or a combination of, we'll work with them on painting the antennas, those colors. I think we could come to some very good ideas and concepts to make that work. With regard to condition number 13 and the rewording, yes, Mr. Shepherd was speaking, I was listening very carefully because that is something, as Mr. Heer mentioned, that making sure we understand what the conditions say. It ties in a little bit to noticing. This is an application we filed back in 2015. We had a filing notice that was given to the city and I received a great deal of comment, public comment at that time, lots of phone calls, lots of emails. I worked with Mr. Chua at the city to answer those. When we approached a hearing at the end of 2015, that was scheduled about the time of the meeting up at the site, we received a lot more public comment in answer to those questions. For this hearing, when it was re-notice, we received one email that Mr. Chua forwarded to me and copied me on in response and said, here's the applicant's number, feel free to call him. We didn't receive any phone calls. So the types of questions with regard to landscape could have been addressed and discussed then. But with that said, condition number 13, as suggested, is acceptable to us. What I would suggest to get public input on those comments, rather than another meeting with the HOA, is to give the public the opportunity to comment, either to call me, to email me, email Mr. Chua, staff, both of us altogether, so that the input from the public is clear and then the city's landscape architect can make that decision based on that input from the public, what would be appropriate. And then we could take that plan back to Cal American Water, and that's important because there's nothing that we plant that we could allow to disturb their use and proper maintenance of the water tank facility. That was something, you say, well, what happened since that meeting in December of 2015 to two years later where we are tonight? That was discussion with CalM Water to make sure that the trees would not impact their water operations. So any discussion would need to include them as well. So there might be things that might not be apparent to somebody just walking by. There's underground pipelines and things in that area that need to be protected. And so if we were limit the landscaping to the areas where the trees were proposed, we know that that will work and take suggestions to the public, to the city's landscape architect to have them see what would be most appropriate and planted and we would accept that. I believe, Mr. Chairman, does that answer your question or give you the, what you were looking for in response?
What you said is what I'm looking for. My specific question though was whether you are okay with the change in language that Mr. Shepherd proposed to condition 13.
Yes, sir, we are.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, Commissioner Nichols?
Yes, I did have a question, although we haven't really got to the discussion point here, but earlier in our conversation, we were talking about the ongoing maintenance of oak trees at the time, but perhaps now more landscaping. As we get into our deliberations, if we decide on a point that it has to be tied to a certain time period, whether it be, you know, one, two years, five years, or being able to report back or the period of the permit, would you have any concerns if it were tied to a fixed time that every so often, somebody from Verizon would have to go out, attest to the fact landscaping is still satisfactory and report that to the city? Would there be any concerns about that?
Yes, and it's not with the actual activity of doing that. That is, that type of monitoring is something that many other jurisdictions do, a condition monitoring type system, RF emissions reporting or graffiti reporting, making sure that a project is properly maintained. And there's annual certifications, letters that are written in catalog to cover those things. So that's something that... catalog to cover those things. So that's something that the industry's used to. And the way that operates for us is it goes into a condition of approval, and then it goes into operations notes. So every year, they see these triggers, these flags, basically like an Outlook reminder pops up and says, hey, remember, you got to take care of this. And then it reports back. In Thousand Oaks, does the city have the mechanism to receive that and work with that type of information? As Mr. Heer had mentioned, that there's usually a six-month or 12-month landscaping review, but then it's code enforcement action, somebody reports it, and then we would go out and repair it. Would such an activity be in conflict with the state, the city's normal operating procedure to catalog that information? And I ask that because we would have to discuss it, have it put into a condition, and something that would work for all of us. But that type of reporting is things that we do in other places, and we could, it could be done. But those conditions come quite clear. You write this letter, it goes to this party, it covers these items. And we would need that spelt out in a condition to make it acceptable.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just responding to a point that both Mr. Heer and our discussion here, just to reiterate, and more for their sake, you had said that you're fine as far as the matte finish being different color, because city staff has said black. Black is what's in condition number 12, it's a matte finish with a color to blend. If we already decided on black, I have an issue with that. But you're, from what I'm gathering from you, you're fine with exploring other colors, other options, something that works for the actual environment. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Schubin.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. At this point, thank you, the public, for coming in. I want to echo Commissioner Nichols' comments about what intelligent and well-crafted questions you posed and concerns you posed tonight. Thank you all for coming in. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up the floor among commissioners for discussions and/or a motion. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, I just want to, again, thank everybody, the neighbors and the community for coming out. Suffice to say, we actually like to see people here, and we actually like to interact with more than the five of us. We try to reiterate what every possible angle could be, but we always like to hear because there's always points and there's always comments we miss, and there's always considerations that we may not think of. So thank you very much for coming out tonight. And, you know, that being said, I think the FCC guides a lot of these principles as far as the RTF, the frequencies. It certainly sets the grounding standard by which the city's allowed to operate. I think that the issues that we've addressed tonight have, you know, brought in as much of the neighborhood attention as neighborhood attention, neighborhood comments that we can. I think we've well-versed condition number 13. We've talked about color. We've talked about landscape. We've talked about so many different aspects of aesthetics. And it comes back to aesthetics, what Dr. Kramer had mentioned. So with that being said, I mean, I will make a motion to approve SUP 2015-70421 with the conditions, the changes to condition number 13, as reiterated by Mr. Shepherd. And as far as any issues, I, with the matte black, I think that's well-versed in the record where the applicant stands on that issue. So again, approval, SUP 2015-70421 with the condition 13 changed to address the language found in Mr. Shepherd's change to that.
Based on the findings.
And based on the, yes, based on all the staff report and the findings and recommendations contained therein.
Commissioner Nichols?
Just a point of clarification. Thank you, Mr. Pletcher, for putting that together for us. Were there, I know we had a number of conditions tossed around as far as pointing out what conditions stated what, but was there any other changes or modifications to conditions, or was it only condition number 13?
From my notes, I only have condition number 13. We had reiterated and discussed how to attack, I think, other options. But I think that's been well-versed in our back-and-forth with the applicant and city staff. The only language, unless Mr. Heer wants to jump in, the only language I have is number 13.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I was trying to keep up with all these conditions and zipping across on the screen here. Didn't quite catch them all.
So if I may, my understanding echoes Commissioner Pletcher's, that we had discussed possible changes to condition 12, but as Mr. Heer pointed out, that already requires natural colors or surrounding colors. So no change was suggested there. And then Mr. Shepherd had suggested a change of language to condition 13. That is part of Commissioner Pletcher's motion.
Very good.
And as far as I know, that's it.
Okay. Just want to make sure because I was, I've got lots of notes here, and I don't know that I caught quite everything. Yeah, and with that, I would just mention, I would certainly would support the motion. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we've had a number of these cell sites over the years. People coming pro and con. It's been a very, very healthy discussion this evening. Appreciate all the comments. And I think it is a rather unique site. I don't know that I can recall any other site where we've had antennas on fences before, certainly on water towers and some that we've tried to obscure but not on the fence. And I've never heard people asking us not to plant oak trees before, so it was very interesting to hear that. But I think, like I said, I think it's well-founded. I do understand the point, and I think we do need to take that into consideration in the future as we move forward as to what truly blends. And an oak tree, as much as I like oak trees, that doesn't mean they're the answer to all of our issues here. So yeah, I definitely will support that. Appreciate all the comments from the citizens that have come this evening.
Should we go with the poison oak route, like you suggested earlier?
It's always an option. The poison oak and cactus will certainly keep people away.
I don't really have any, anything much more to add. I'm in agreement with Commissioners, the comments by Commissioners Pletcher and Nichols. With regard to concerns that the public raised, I think I heard, I think I agreed with at least one thing that every public speaker said tonight. I'm in agreement that oak trees wouldn't be a good fit here. With regard to the RF issues, which we do hear just about every time we have a cell site application, I would be pretty mad if I thought, if I believed there was a basis for RF problems and that our hands were tied and it was only the purview of the FCC and we couldn't do anything about it. But I don't believe that, number one, I don't believe that to be true. And number two, I think the opposite situation, where every municipality in the nation, and there are many thousands of them, could set its own RF rules, much as that would be an excellent full employment program for Dr. Kramer, that would be a quite unworkable, and I think a much greater danger to public safety. So I'm, again, I don't believe there's any public health hazard here. I think there's a public benefit in the maps that Ms. Leopold showed. There's a quadrant of Dos Fuentes that doesn't have good coverage. It may have some coverage, but it's not good coverage compared with the rest of the area. So I think that's a benefit. I don't think we're anywhere close to the threshold of an RF harm. And I do think that the single nationwide set of regulations in this case is a public good. So for those reasons, and because of the change that Mr. Shepherd so helpfully suggested, I also will support this motion. Are there any other comments? All right. If the clerk could, please prepare us for a vote.
Motion passed 4-0.
And this is a, yeah. This is a public motion, so it is subject to appeal. Any aggrieved party has 10 days to appeal the motion before the Community Development Department. At this point, I'm going to suggest that we take a brief 10-minute recess and then come back and review item seven. And we're back from our recess. We move now to item seven on our agenda, Community Development Department Reports and Referrals. Mr. Gilli?
Yes, and Mr. Shepherd has put together a slideshow that goes through what has either come to the Planning Commission in the past year or things that are happening in the community under construction. And so I'd like to hand it over to him.
Good evening, Planning Commission. We're here tonight to give a brief recap of the 2017 Planning Commission actions. There were 12 Planning Commission meetings in 2017. 18 public hearing items were heard over those 12 commission meetings, six legislative cases, and 12 entitlement cases. Of the legislative cases, we had three municipal code amendments. First up was the urgency ordinance for medical cannabis, which was heard in January. Then we had the secondary dwelling units that was heard in March, and the medical cannabis regulations were heard in October. The three general plan amendments reviewed by this body, we had the forestry element heard in January, and also at the same meeting, actually, the circulation element amendment for the Rolling Oaks Drive classification. And then we had a consistency of the capital improvement project budget with the general plan in April. The entitlement cases, the body reviewed in February, on February 13th, was a special use permit for the Daly Group mixed-use project on the Boulevard, the old Loopy's Restaurant site. April 10th, we had a special use permit for Circus Tricks, which was a commercial recreation use of the Jan's Marketplace. Also that night, we had a development permit, major modification, review for Thousand Oaks Toyota for a building expansion of their dealership building. On April 24th, we had a special use permit for Verizon, which is for a new wireless facility on a city water tank over on White Gate Road, and a special use permit and oak tree permit for use of Farley for oak tree, our car wash with an oak tree impacts over on Newberry Road. And on June 12th, we had a PPD for Moses, which was a new single-family dwelling with a 25% encroachment, natural trade encroachment over on Skyline. And July 10th, we had three cases, land division for Los Robles Office Partnership, which divided the existing office complex. This is on the south side of the 101 freeway on Moore Park Road into seven parcels of record. We had an oak tree permit and landmark tree permit application for the Larry Court HOA for removal and pruning of oak and sycamore trees that were causing damage to the units. And then also a special use permit for the Caneo Valley Auto Center, which allowed auto sales and repair in an industrial building on Teller Road. And wrapping up the year, on September 11th, we had a development permit, major modification for the Oakbrook Shopping Center to modify the hours of operation. On December 4th last week, we had the PPD for the Tony Project over on Combs Avenue, another special, single-family dwelling with 25% trade encroachment, terrain encroachment. And December 12, 11th tonight, we had the special use permit for the Verizon Wireless site on the water tank via El Cero. So, you know, these projects are all part of the overall review that the Community Development Department processes, entitlements, and legislative items over the years. This year, up from January 1st to November 30th, just to let you know how busy we've been, we've had approximately 530 entitlements in process within the Planning Division of CDD and approximately 6,900 building permits issued by our Building Division. And that's just from January 1st to November 30th. So we've not included the permits for December. And besides the current projects, we've been looking at, and the projects the commission looked at this year, there's also projects that are under development right now that the commission in prior years have looked at and reviewed and approved. First one is as far as residential development. We've got the Hillcrest Drive project. This is seven single-family detached homes. It's under construction. This is actually approved, excuse me, by your predecessors, Planning Commission in 2000 through time extensions and also legislative extensions that the state has granted on tract maps. It's extended the period of time. So that's what we have here. We also have the 20 Oaks Project, the commission reviewed in 2012. This is on Mayflower and Warwick, and we have one house left for full build-out of that tract. They've been going pretty fast. The Miller Ranch Project, also approved in 2012. The site has been graded at this point. Next step is for the building of the individual units, the custom homes. We have another site here on Newberry Vista. This is a 55-unit condominium project that a prior commission had reviewed. And the Warwick Condominiums, this is a, actually a project administratively that was recently approved and constructed over on Sunset Drive. This is in the model neighborhood area of the city, the Old Town section, that actually has some specific or special design criterias. It's been kind of quiet over in that area. It's usually a, they're older, single-family homes, higher-density components. We're seeing a lot of repurposing of the properties with townhouses and apartments, and it's getting a little more interest in that area. In commercial sites, we have the Lowe's Development, which was approved in January 2016 by the commission. This is out, this is SDA site, and it is being graded as we speak. Well, not now, it's evening, but during the daytime it is. Ventu Park Plaza, this is actually at the old Home Depot site, as some of us recall, the Walmart grocery stores in that location. And that's actually getting close to the build-out for completion of that center. Of course, the Gelson's Oakbrook Plaza site, Gelson's has been in operation now for several months, renovated that property site. We have the Jaguar Land Rover project that, excuse me, is actually under construction. It was tearing down a couple of older, older-designed dealership buildings and replacing it with a new design. And Ferrari has come in over on Willow Lane in Hampshire. Industrial projects, Caneo Vista Business Center, there's three buildings on the site. Actually, one of the buildings, larger building, is set up for office condo, or industrial condos on site. It is now complete and open. Landscaping is in place, and they're selling units at this point. So it's a nice addition over on, over off of, in the Caneo Center, off of the, or within the Rancho Caneo specific plan. The Saris Regis Project, these are nine industrial buildings to fill out the rest of the developed area on Caneo Spectrum Drive. One of the primary tenants coming in is the Altera Medical, biomedical building coming in. It's under construction and should be occupied next year. And then the Natured over on Willow Lane is under construction, the addition that the commission reviewed last year also. I have several institutional projects, the Fire Station 30- We have several institutional projects, the Fire Station 35 on Mitchell Road or Drive, this was actually a county project, the county built the building, but the county did approach the city, and the CDD and the Public Works Department did provide quite a bit of commentary and review as far as the design of the project. The CLUs just recently opened, the William Roland Art Center. This was opened in October this year. And Sage Mountain is under construction at this point. This is an assisted living facility, north side of the 101 freeway, just beyond the crest of the Caneo Grade. The Griffin Assisted Living Site, actually, this body will be viewing next year, 2018, this is an upcoming project, as is the Silverado Project for memory care. This project did receive initiation for a general plan amendment and concurrent processing and zoning this year, and this project will be before this body in 2018. Some of the projects in the downtown area, the Clay Court Townhouse Project is complete and occupied, was reviewed by this body in 2014. Of course, we have the Lupi's Project that was talked about earlier. The Justice Project over Los Feliz, a 45-unit apartment project reviewed by the Commission in 2014, it's in building plan check right now, as is the Caneo School Road, 40-unit apartment project approved by this body in 2016, it's also in plan check. The Megan Place 36 Apartment Project, this is off of Megan Place, it was approved administratively, and it's into occupancy stage, it's cleared at this point. And then we have the Sapphys Trail Community Park that had a groundbreaking in October, grading permits were issued in November and should be underway real soon. And concludes our brief presentation of activity in the city right now and a recap of the Commission's activities over 2017. Does the Commission have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, for that presentation. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, just wanted to thank Mr. Shepherd for his presentation, but also I realized as he was talking about these projects, this is probably just a little snippet of his career. He's been with us for 25, 35, 45 years.
Thirty-three, actually.
Somewhere in that range, but has quite the extensive knowledge of things. In fact, I believe, weren't you one of the plant checkers for the Dos Fientos subdivision in its initial phases?
I actually worked on virtually the entire sub-project.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Craig Smith did the environmental components of the specific plan.
Right, right. But I just want to point that out, that he does, has quite the institutional knowledge and is quite the resource, and even though we're looking at quite a few projects here, this is just a snap in what he's seen over the years, so I just wanted to recognize your efforts in helping to make our community what it is.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, that some of your projects prompted some questions, and that is just, what is the current status of the Circus Tricks, the Toyota Expansion, and the Car Wash Projects?
Okay, actually, all three of those projects are awaiting the dismissal of plans for plan check at this point.
Thank you. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Shepherd, and I certainly think back on what Commissioner Nichols had said. You do have a long and historic career here, and you've seen anything and everything come through these doors and asked to be built in this community. The discussion on the Fire Department reminded me of that other, I can't remember if it was last year or this, it was probably last year, when they came and spoke to us about a project they wanted to put near CLU. It was another fire department or another fire station? I can't remember the exact road.
On Arbolas.
On Arbolas.
Yeah.
I just was curious, do you have any updates on that or know where they're at on that?
Yeah, I have no idea where we are on it. We did look at the relationship as far as for a fire station to be relocated to the property behind, I believe it's a Lutheran church between
Yes.
that location, because the current site is quite dated, it's actually outdated for the size of the equipment they need and so forth, but I'm not aware of any further discussions on that at this point.
Okay, thank you. It had struck me, and I wanted to just follow up on it, because I was very curious to see, because I remember the county rep here talking about how outdated and how much needed the project is, and they're backing their fire trucks behind the building, blocking roads and doing everything they can. Thank you.
Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually wanted to personally say thank you, Mr. Shepherd. I am actually a Dos Fientos owner, and owe a great deal to you for all the effort you put into making our community fantastic, and I very much appreciate everything you did and all the service you put in for the decades to make this city great. The other thing that I appreciate from the presentation is I'm noticing that we're doing kind of a strategic repurposing of property where it makes sense in a very balanced way, and I appreciate a lot of the attention, you know, there's a lot of permits obviously that are being issued, but at the same point, it looks like it's being done in a very balanced way, and I appreciate the way, and hopefully we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. I'll add my thanks as well for many of the staff, but for you in particular, Mr. Shepherd, I appreciate not only when we need to learn about the history of any particular development, you just happen to have it off the top of your head, but not just the specifics of the project, but also the thinking that went into each project and why certain decisions were made, certain other decisions weren't made. That's a very, very helpful thing as we move forward and rebuild, so thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Gilli.
Yes, if I could also let the TV crew know, we are going to have one more slide, and it is kind of in keeping with some of the theme of what the Commissioners were talking about. Don, if you want to go.
Yes, if we could. Actually, we'd like to congratulate our Recording Secretary, Lilia, on her retirement. It's a happy time and a sad time. Lilia has been working with us for, I believe, 13 years. She's done a stellar job, Recording Secretary to this body, and we certainly will miss her, but are happy for her for her upcoming retirement.
No.
Do we need a symbolic vote or anything to give her something to do? No, I'm kidding.
No, I just want to say thank you to everyone.
I know I speak for the whole Commission in thanking you. I mean, one, seeing you here every meeting is one major reason I look forward to coming to the meetings, and, you know, your organization, your knowledge of how things work is the reason why these meetings work, so thank you for that. Well, Miss Yee. Commissioner Nichols.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, appreciate all that you've done for us. You make us look better than we deserve, that we're actually coordinated and organized, and you have all the information ready for us, and I certainly appreciate that. Got some big shoes to fill. I know we've got other staff here to follow, they're watching your every move very closely to make sure they do exactly what you do, but thank you so much for your time, and I hope you do enjoy your retirement to the fullest.
Commissioner McManay.
I also want to thank you. This was my first year here, so I had some stumbles, and you helped me a lot, and I really appreciate everything you did, and you did it with a lot of patience. Thank you.
Commissioner Pletcher.
What can we say that already hasn't been said, but just from me personally, thank you for your service, and thank you for putting up with the five of us. We certainly appreciate it.
Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Being new here, it's always nice to have a smiling face, somebody who is ready to help, and the very first day, you were always very accommodating, helpful, making sure that I knew where I was supposed to go, that I didn't do anything I wasn't supposed to do, and I very much appreciate you making me again look better than I deserve to be, so thank you.
Mr. Gilli.
And just add on to that, Lilia helps these meetings work, but they help get all the package of materials to you in a good sense. So it's more than five people, about at least maybe 24 to 30 people that she helps out with all of her work, and we appreciate it, and enjoy your retirement.
Again, from all of us, thank you, and have a wonderful retirement. Thank you. All right, we move on now to item eight, minutes and resolutions. Is there a motion? Commissioner Nichols.
Just a quick point of clarification. Much to our dismay, Chair Newman was not present here, and while that was caught in all the tail end of the documents, at the very first sentence of the minutes, it said that he was here, so I didn't want to have anybody conflicted, so those could just be corrected, and with that correction, I would move to approve the minutes and resolutions.
Will the Senior Recording Clerk please prepare us for a vote? I just pushed it. There we go.
Motion passed four to zero with Commissioner Newman abstaining.
Thank you. We move now to AB 1234 reports. These are reports by Commissioners on meetings attended at city expense. Do we have any 1234 activity since our last meeting a week ago? All right, here it is done. We turn now to Commission comments. Commissioners? Commissioner Nichols.
Well, I know several of us were there, but was able to attend the State of the City Address, had a wonderful lunch, so I don't know if that counts as an AB 1234 report, but I was there at city expense. And then I was also able to attend the City Council Meeting, reorganization meeting, and I just enjoyed the chance to hear from Mayor Bill de la Peña during the luncheon of the, actually, very accomplished year. It was, you know, as we heard from Mr. Shepherd, you know, the things that we had before us, you know, obviously, the council has much more, much more extensive, but to see what takes place in a year in this city is kind of overwhelming sometimes, it's like I was exhausted hearing that after the one-hour presentation. But it just kind of reiterates how important it is, you know, our role, city role, and then all the staff role here, just to kind of make sure our city functions, you know, just as Mr. Gilli was pointing out with Lilia and some of her activities, yes, you know, she might be what we see, but there's so many other people behind it, and a lot of activity to make this city function properly. We certainly appreciate that, and of course, recognizing the other agencies like the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department that make our city function properly. I certainly appreciate that, and enjoyed the opportunity to spend time with some of the fellow Commissioners there and the other staff as well, so thank you to the city for making that possible for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I initially wanted to say that our thoughts and prayers are with those people being affected by the fires. It's been absolutely overwhelming to see the effects on, obviously, the people that live there, but every community connected to it. One thing, and again, it's a small token, but those people affected, if you're watching here, consider also there's ability to possibly have your property taxes reduced to the extent you have damage to your property. Obviously, hopefully, not in Thousand Oaks necessarily, but if you have friends and family, and today is tax day, one thing they might be able to do is actually get their property taxes reassessed by virtue of that damage, so something to pass on for them to check into. I also was very pleased to be for the lunch and also for the reorganization here at City Council, and wanted to congratulate Mayor Bill de la Peña for being the most dedicated person I think I've seen. Every city function she could go to, it seemed she was at. She literally must have had a few clones around as she was going to every single event, and she just did a great job as an ambassador to our city, so I very much appreciated that. And to thank incoming Mayor Andy Fox and Mayor Pro Tem Rob McCoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to echo what my fellow Commissioners have said, I certainly, in all of what was accomplished last year by the city staff and the City Council, and again, want to thank Mayor Bill de la Peña for her hard work and her effort, and look forward to seeing what the council has in store for this upcoming year with Mayor Fox and Mayor Pro Tem Rob McCoy. But also, I think tonight echoes a very important, we accomplished a very important function, and I think that function, you know, in a way, was threatened this past year up in Sacramento with Senate Bill 649. You know, fortunately, you know, I want to thank our Governor Brown for vetoing that bill that would essentially make most of this process of considering cell phone towers in our city almost administrative. And I think for my fellow Commissioners, as well as the public and anyone watching, I think it's important to pay attention next year to what's going on up in Sacramento. I wouldn't be surprised if this bill reared its head again and tried to work its way through the process. I think you saw tonight a successful reason that we go through this process, because we had members of the public that were here tonight raising valid comments, and I echo what the Chair said, that with each comment that appeared, I, you know, picked up something that, you know, either you hadn't thought of or was a completely valid point for this particular reason. And all that is essentially threatened when such bills like this exist, and it concerns me and it worries me, because especially with, and Dr. Kramer isn't here to ask him again, and there's no real good place to ask that in what we were considering tonight, but that the next generation, the next 5G technology has smaller cell phone towers, and they're going to be more numerous, and this bill would allow them to be placed at places very much around the city that many of us certainly wouldn't like, and I reiterate what Dr. Kramer said, this process is aesthetics. And to take that away from this body, to take it away from how hard the city staff worked, is very, very concerning, so please continue to pay attention to what's going on up in Sacramento, and if you need to, you know, write your local representatives and voice your opinion, because this certainly isn't something that we need to take lightly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One more comment I wanted to make as well, as I was reading, as I'm sure we all were in the newspaper, every day, the current status of the fires and where they were going and what damage had been done, I was interested to see the juxtaposition of the two articles, one talking about nearly 500 homes that were destroyed, and the other one talking about the housing crisis that we have in Southern California. And as I was thinking about that, I thought, you know, to add insult to injury to these families that have lost their home, there are no homes for them to move to for two to three years, even if they wanted to rebuild. Where do they go? You know, I'm sure the city of Ventura does not have 500 single-family dwellings, just waiting for these people to rent for two to three years, let alone apartments, and of course, they lost an apartment complex with 50 units. So I realized, not only is that going to devastate them today with the loss that they have, and, you know, with all their belongings, their homes, and their memories, thankful that they have their lives still, but where do they go? What do they do? You know, I'm sure some of them are small business owners, you know, how do they keep things going? And so it has this ripple effect, you know, we're all affected, because that's going to affect our whole community, not just the city of Ventura, but the county of Ventura and beyond, where we don't have places to put these people. Some of these people will be moving to the county likely never to return, you know, so that's the type of impact that it has, which will be all of us, some of our Some of our family and friends will be dramatically impacted by this. And so where we can, you know, we obviously offer what support we can to, you know, lift them up, prayers and thoughts, wonderful, but, you know, obviously tangible things to actually make it work. But with the housing situation we're in, it's obviously, it's not going to be tomorrow, this is going to be fixed, this is going to be long-term. But it was just, it just kind of really struck me, we have no place for these people to go. And, you know, where they end up, whether it be with their families and friends for a short term, you know, just making do the way they can, will definitely have some long-term impacts, and, you know, we'll have to be nearby to support them as best we can for quite some time.
Thank you, Commissioner, for raising that extremely valid point. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, excuse me, I want to echo all the comments of my fellow Commissioners. Everything you said is valid and heartfelt and appreciated. However, I have a more practical comment. I'm looking ahead to the adjournment, and it appears that we're adjourning to January 9th, which on my calendar is a Tuesday.
This is how we throw people off. You are correct. Is it the 8th or the 15th? So the 8th should be. Thank you. Good catch. I'll close by echoing a couple of things we've discussed here. I think all of us were at the State of the City Luncheon. Outgoing Mayor Bill de la Peña is a personal friend, and I've known for years that she's had a long-time interest in the arts, but I never realized until seeing her presentation just what an extensive array of performing arts, of visual arts, all kinds of arts. The city supports, and we have, right, right here in our city, not in the area, right here. And I'd encourage everyone in Thousand Oaks to take advantage of that wonderful resource, which makes us, makes us all more fuller human beings. I also want to underscore my appreciation of Commissioner Nichols' comments regarding how many people will be displaced by the fires. We're very fortunate here in Thousand Oaks that they didn't affect us, but I'm sure we all have family and friends who were affected in nearby communities. And then there's another group of people here in our community who are also affected, and that's our public safety officials. I would encourage all of you, if you see a sheriff, if you see a firefighter, you're probably seeing a lot of firefighters come through our community, because different organizations from around the country really are coming through our city now. Take time to stop them, thank them for what they're doing, and ask what the public can do to help them, because they need our help now. So if there are no other comments, I'll wish everyone the happy holiday season, and adjourn us until January the 8th, 2018. Good night, Thousand Oaks.